It's been long.
All right, may I have a motion that we've discussed those three matters for which we went into closed session? One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three eleven A three, discussion of acquisition or disposition of publicly held real property regarding an easement. One item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A seven, consultation with legal counsel pertaining to the actual or probable litigation concerning a zoning violation. And one item under Virginia Code two point two dash three seven eleven A eight, consultation with legal counsel concerning a zoning provision. Hang on. Let me have a look.
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
And Mr. Reese?
Aye.
And I would have the pledge of allegiance by councilman Radcliffe, followed by the implications.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, let us be thankful for the many blessings of our community. We ask you to guide our heart and mind in the decisions we make for the citizens of the town of Pulaski. We ask this in your name. Amen. Ask if there is to be any modifications to the public session? None. With that being said, I'd like to welcome our guests and visitors that we have with us today, and hopefully all those online as well. Appreciate you joining us. The next lit on our agenda today is a public hearing for Calfy Community and Cultural Center CDBG grant. I'd like to ask Mr. Williams to the front.
Should I stand right over here?
Up front, this is fine.
All right. So we're, as you said, we're here tonight for a public hearing on the proposed adaptive reuse of the historic Calfy Training School. It feels weird to have a public hearing when the public can't actually be here, so I hope folks will, somebody will let us know if people have feedback and that people will share their feedback through the Facebook feed. I appreciate the time the council's already given us to update you about this project, so I'm not gonna, I promised Darlene I wouldn't take up too much of your time tonight. I'm just gonna walk through a little bit the proposal summary for this community development block grant. And viewers at home can see this proposal summary by visiting the town's website or the Calfy Community and Cultural Center website, which can be found at calfyccc.org. So the proposed project, which is the full Calfy Community and Cultural Center, is gonna renovate the school into a center that will house childcare services, a computer lab, a museum, a commercial kitchen, and event and office spaces. At a future meeting, hopefully sometime this month, you'll be deciding whether or not to authorize the town manager to submit the CDBG grant proposal for this project, in which the town will request one point five million dollars from the Department of Historic and, uh, the Department of Housing and Community Development. On behalf of the project, the town has already submitted proposals to the Appalachian Regional Commission, the National Park Service, and the National Trust for Historic Preservation for over one million dollars total. And as you and the redevelopment and housing authority have already authorized, the property will be donated to the initiative after the renovation is complete. That property is assessed at three hundred and thirteen thousand dollars and will be an impact match for the project. The balance of the project will be funded through historic tax credits and other private donations and grants. CDBG funding is specifically requested to complete the renovation of the Harmon Learning Center, and, which is the childcare program, and the Dorothy D. Berry Venable Digital Learning Lab. The reason we're doing this, and I've written many, many hundreds of pages about this, but I'm gonna give you the high level reasons right now, are that local employers tell us it's difficult for them to fill job and to retain employees, in part because of a lack of reliable childcare options locally. The pandemic has also highlighted the need for flexible out-of-school care options for older children. With a higher than average poverty rate here in the town, we're also challenged with regard to food security and access to healthy foods. So the combined childcare center, computer lab, commercial kitchen, and event space at the CCCC will address all of these challenges and more, while also leveraging cultural resources and building local capacity to take on future challenges. This CDBG grant is gonna make possible the renovation and outfitting of nearly seven thousand square feet of the historic school into the quality childhood education, early childhood education facility and digital learning lab. It will also create at least, or allow sixty-four local full-time jobs to be retained by low to moderate income individuals because of the childcare services offered. And at least fourteen, but probably more, local full-time jobs will be created at the CCCC. Ninety-seven children, the benefits of the full project, some of them, the highlights, are that ninety-seven children will experience high-quality childcare opportunities and their parents will be able to access training and higher-paying jobs. Employers will experience less employee absenteeism and will be able to fill open positions more quickly. Food-based businesses, at least three in the first year, will be created and expanded. Farmers will have year-round access to consumers. Food distribution organizations will be able to coordinate and expand their services. A well-appointed community event space will be created. Blight in and around the downtown area will be reduced. And, uh, local leadership and partnership capacity across lines of race, class, and generations will be enhanced. The project will also leverage millions of dollars in construction funds and hundreds of thousands of dollars a year in childcare subsidies through the Department of Social Services that would otherwise go to other communities. So if anybody watching or who's here is interested in more information about the project, including our environmental review and other plans, they can visit calfyccc.org. And with that, I'll turn it back to Mr. Dawson for the public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Williams. Before we open the public hearing, were there any questions from council? With that being said, we'll open the public hearing for the Calfy Community and Cultural Center CDBG grant. Hearing has seen no comment, we will close the public hearing. Next, we have, uh, council consider resolution twenty twenty-one dash oh four. If there's any comments or questions, I know I think for, I guess, the benefit of anybody watching, any questions in regards to quorum, we have four council members. As my speaker, I still stand as a voting council member, and so the majority of the vote would constitute with three votes.
I agree.
And then Tony agrees.
Let's, uh, if there's no more comment, I move to adopt resolution twenty dash, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-one dash zero four as written.
Say.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
As seen.
All right, thank you. So the next item on our agenda eleven is public hearing for PC case number twenty twenty-one dash oh two ZA zoning amendment request by Pulaski Development LLC, Agent Kevin Connor. That's Mr. Connor, if you'd like to come forward.
First, Mr. Dawson, if you don't mind, I provide the staff report on behalf, uh, on behalf of the town.
Yes, sir.
The town of Pulaski has received a request for a zoning amendment from Pulaski Development LLC, Agent Kevin Connor, who's with us tonight, to add section four point eleven point two dash two point one, light industrial uses, A cottage industry, C custom manufacturing, D greenhouse or nursery, E industry type one, H packaging, K warehouses, to section four point eight two dash two, special exceptions of the B one limited business district. Pulaski Development LLC would like to specifically expand the possibilities of use on the property and increase the likelihood of attracting long-term viable tenants. Pulaski Development LLC believes that these uses would not negatively affect the character of the district, nor be incompatible with surrounding uses. Uh, I do want to point out to the council that the B one limited business district is the smallest geographically of all the business districts. If the, also if the zoning amendment is approved by, uh, town council, the applicant would still have to apply for the special exception use authorization, which would require another hearing with the planning commission and a subsequent hearing with the town council. If you guys have any questions for me at this time, I'd be glad to take them.
Yeah, I just have one question.
Go ahead.
I, I see, so it's basically we're adding these as sort of special uses, so all of them make sense. The cottage industry, the custom man, the greenhouse. It's industry type one that I, I, I'm a little concerned about. Um, you know, it's just a, that seems like a, you know, a very, the other ones seem like a reasonable re, adaptive reuse of an old, you know, retail facility. But industry, industrial type one is establishments engaged in processing, manufacturing, pounding, assembly, um, you know. I mean, I guess it's to control external effects such as smoke noise, but it does seem like there would be, I mean, there would be some, I mean, how, how controlled would that be? Like, you know, to give you an example, I was thinking today, I was looking at Thompson Tire, um, I don't know whether his own, but you know, they don't produce a lot of smoke, but there is smoke that I assume from polarization and other things that have to do with the, you know, the repair of, you know, tires and vehicles. So my question is, you know, how control, you know, how much of an effect do those types of uses have on the community? Cause it is, you know, set in a residential neighborhood.
Mr. Connor?
That'd be great.
I can address it if you're done with Mr. Deal.
Yeah, that, that, that was, yeah, I wasn't sure what, where the, right. Happy to talk about it.
Mr. Deal?
Counsel, I'm Kevin Connor. Pleasure to be here tonight, I'm with Shaw Development, proud new owners of the Plaza, which is now, formerly Walmart, Magic Mart, and has the Ollies Bargain Outlet in it currently. And to your point, uh, with the, with the different uses, we're just trying to, and we're trying to fish with a little bit broader net with some of the uses. And if this is approved, we still have to come back before council, so then any conditions can be put on that. So if it's something that, you know, that you, that council doesn't like or doesn't wanna see in the community, we can just, we wouldn't even bring it to you. So we're just looking to expand the uses to try to build the.
It's really no more than what's in our right now. What's being right now is, is mainly stores, that's what's present right now. So basically, uh, it, it's gonna be that, any other change, you'll have to come forward anyway, so.
Before we did any type of use, that what we've added, it would still have to come back before council.
Now, now, and I understand, I mean, I, I don't, like I said, the other six or seven uses I don't, I see is completely appropriate and, and, and within the sort of character and use. It's that light industry, it's industry type one that seems, you know, it, that, that's my question. I just wanna understand, like, what scale, I mean, we're talking about, um, like a, like a, like a bonco type of operation? Or would that be, would that be like industry type two? I'm just trying to understand so I can make sure I'm informed for the vote.
So industry type one, if you, if you wouldn't mind, Mr. Connor, re-speaking to this, um, I know you had mentioned a little bit of the definition. For the other council members, um, in your packet, there is a list of definitions for each of these issues, and I'm sure you reviewed over them. Um, and industry type one specifically is ve- very internally focused in terms of uses on the property. So it, the intent of industry type one is to limit any type of external vision of the industrial use. And, and as it mentions, it is, uh, capable of operation in such a manner as to control the external effects of the manufacturing process, such as smoke, noise, soot, dirt, vibration, odor, et cetera, which is definitely, um, things we wanna keep in mind for the residential.
My question is, I wasn't sure of a control map. Does control mean eliminate so that, you know, if you're standing outside or, you know, across the street, you can't hear, you know, it's not, I'm assuming it's not false sampling where, you know, you're, you're hearing heavy machinery? But my question is, what does control mean from a zoning standpoint?
I think the control is the conditions that you could place upon it if you brought something, uh, to council.
Okay.
Well, I think the intent is really to say that you wouldn't know what's going on inside the building.
Okay.
Except for cars.
Unless you went inside, because there are not materials, uh, vehicles of any, you know, unusual description that are exterior, you know, that you wouldn't have excessive noise, odor, those kinds of things. And certainly, uh, as has been stated, you can, when it comes back under special exception, uh, clearly say that, you know, there can be no noise past a certain time or a certain decibel, uh, yeah.
Okay, thanks, I appreciate y'all.
I think it's a really a great question, Mr. Reese. I just think for, for myself right now as the zoning administrator, it's difficult for me to hypothetically think. I think at that time, if they come and propose a use to us, and there's a, a certain company, I think it would be very important for us to, of course, review that company, maybe visit a location, see what that, that process looks like, and make sure that what we're bringing into the town would, of course, be able to be limited and controlled in a manner that doesn't conflict with the surrounding uses. It's a definitely a great point, I just, it's a little difficult for me to answer until we have something maybe more specific presented by, um, Pulaski Development LLC for the property.
Okay.
Thank you.
And just one thing in Christiansburg, and part of the reason, um, this sort of was brought up to us was, we, Harvist Hemp, introduced CBD oil in Christiansburg. If you didn't know what was happening there, you wouldn't even know, you, you, basically just a big warehouse and a few cars parked outside, so something like that could be, even though we have zero intention of doing that here, we have a facility for that, but just, that's.
Something similar to that, yeah. Okay, and just so I'm, it's for the, it's not just for the Magic Mart, it's for the whole.
Just for the whole memorial plaza.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you.
And that was really, and I appreciate your time today, uh, only question I had was, is there any specific interest in the, and pointed in the, in the, in y'all's interest for this change currently? Or I believe you answered, it's just purely to trying to open up opportunities to get something moving.
Correct, correct. I will say this, there probably will be.
Yeah, we've had, we've hadn't had no one contact us yet about it. Um, we do have one tenant getting ready to go in, a hair salon, but far as industrial.
I'm, I'm really excited about any coming back alive, and I know it will, it, it really will. So, appreciate it.
Getting ready to put a new roof on the building, it needs a.
That's great. Thank you for your presentation. With that being said, um, I'd like to entertain council with ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh two. And if there are any questions further, or if there would be a motion.
Mr. Rice, may I believe you have to close the, open and close the public hearing.
I apologize. With presentations being complete, I'd like to open the public hearing for PC case number twenty twenty-one oh two ZA zoning amendment request by Pulaski Development LLC. With no comment being heard, we will close the public hearing. Now that we have closed the public hearing, I've entertained a motion for the amendment or ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh two.
I'll wait, um, are we doing the motion for the twenty twenty-one oh two ZA, or just twenty twenty-one?
I think it's just oh two.
Okay. Oh, two. Mr. Rice, I'd like to make a motion, we accept ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh two.
Second.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to a public hearing for PC case number twenty twenty-one dash oh three SE, special exception request by Aggreg Capital LLC. And, uh, before we have, uh, Aggreg Capital come up, we'll ask Mr. Deal if he'll come up first for a staff report.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Council members, the, the town of Pulaski has received a request by Aggreg Capital LLC, Agent Luke Allison, and he's here with his partner Austin Strom, tonight for a property located at thirty-seven West Main Street, uh, tax parcel zero seven two dash zero five one dash two one dash three seven, uh, for a special exception per section four point one zero point two dash two one C of the zoning ordinance to construct second floor apartments and first floor apartments on the south side of the building with entrances fa- facing Pete Creek. You may remember, um, this case, uh, because they had already requested a zoning amendment to permit ground floor dwellings at a joint hearing, um, just, uh, about a month or so ago. The applicant, as mentioned, specifically wants to construct seven apartments on the second floor and three apartments on the first floor on the south side of the building adjacent to Pete Creek, with entrance and exit to those residences from the creek walk. Uh, the second floor apartments, as is custom in the downtown, would have access, entrance and, uh, exit to the front of, of Main Street, but the first floor apartments would only have entrance and exit, uh, to the creek walk. In total, the project would feature ten apartments, uh, totaling approximately eighty-two hundred square feet of apartment space. As mentioned, the second floor apartments will be accessible from the front of the building, but ground floor apartments will only be accessible from the Pete Creek side. Uh, as mentioned in a prior joint hearing, while Luke and Austin had, uh, were working with VHDA and DHCD to secure grant, uh, grant funding for the housing being constructed on the second floor, the organizations, uh, recommended that this project utilize more of the building space for housing uh, because of some of the housing issues in need in our community. Simultaneously, Luke and his team were being informed by multiple community members of the interests many seniors had in living downtown. However, many are unable to do so because of the safety issues that surround the daily use of stairs to access the second floor residences, um, that are currently downtown. With that, if you guys have any questions for me, I'd be glad to take them.
Do you have any questions for Mr. Deal?
Yeah, just one, um, is there any, because of the access of the creek walk, is there any zoning issues or anything that we, that would need? I, I'm just trying to understand, uh, if there's any other, anything that we would need to do about that, um, that walkway to make sure it was appropriate for ingress and egress? Is there any changes we would need to make?
The creek walk?
Yeah.
As of now, this, as my knowledge of the creek walk would be suitable for an access. Um, you can access those buildings, s- some of those buildings from the creek walk already currently.
Okay.
Um, so I don't, I do not see any issues there. Um, I'd like to either consult with Ms. Bertram or, or, uh, Mr. Hager, our building official, to ensure that, um, that's definitely something I'll take note of.
All right, thank you.
I think Matt, question, or similar question came up as we were discussing it before, it was just, uh, you know, a more pointed question and outside of the larger conversation that we were discussing last time. But in this particular instance, uh, it, that area still is prohibited use of vehicles. Is that correct?
There's only, uh, one section that in the past the council, um, closed to traffic. But currently, uh, the county garbage truck does come in, um, off of Washington, goes down and comes through that first alley, uh, that is lit, uh, not the one that is now, uh, the park. The first alley is being used as an access, uh, for the garbage collection issue. And then there's a portion that I think is actually behind two buildings that was closed several years ago. I think clearly as we have more people coming to live in the downtown, um, and, uh, the council has, I think you'll recall, sent, uh, a request to the planning commission to look at whether or not, um, the ability to have first floor apartments uh, in a certain portion of the downtown zone is appropriate because that is a larger zone than this particular block that is the subject of this hearing. So I do think as we have more traffic, both pedestrian and vehicular, I know we've already addressed or started to address the issue of parking availability, uh, there may be some additional actions that the council would take. But I think at this point in time, and with the schedule that's anticipated for renovation of this building, we don't need to address anything immediately, but we already are talking about as additional development occurs, what, um, safety precautions we would need, uh, maybe additional lighting even might be necessary, but we don't see that need at this moment.
Thank you. I'll, I'll bring it through. I always told you two guys it'd be a, a great day if Pulaski, when traffic becomes a problem again, that money trip. Uh, kudos to y'all, and well done. It makes it more important, the, uh, the Pete Creek store that we keep talking about, we won't actually maybe one day bring that down from, hopefully, a public parking right there, which is just a, a skip and hop to absorb. Uh, I think it's in the cool process with word red, I don't know yet, but, uh, maybe that'll help some of the tensions, uh, the parking earth for businesses out there. I told you two it'd be a great day, and here you are. Good job.
Thank you.
I don't support your project. I do have a couple of concerns, though. This building is the, probably the only building, not one of, or a few buildings on the main street that never had residents on the second floor. It has always, always a, a storage area. There's never, you come, uh, up there, there's never an exit from the second floor to the outside, from, from the, from the inside. No way that, in the, in the, out of there. My concern would be, I wonder what the intent was in, in, in the, in the, in the very beginning. Was it ever intended to have residents on the second floor? Because it's never used for anything except storage, and they always use the freight elevator or, or the, the, the. My main concern is the, um, maybe wa- allows, uh, uh, other current things. I'm an old building teacher. And, uh, and I always did. I'm concerned about whether the, the intent was to ever have residents on the second floor.
I'd say, and that's a, that's a great question. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, the freight elevator is not original either. That was an addition in the nineteen forty's, this is a really early nineteen hundreds building. And the building that we are in, twenty-nine West Main, actually used to be part of this building, and it was separated with the firewall all the way through the, the second floor, and, um, it was never intended to be divided like that. Not only that, but the ground floor was divided into multiple storefronts from the, um, five and dime. That was a smaller entrance compared to the entire of the downstairs. Nothing in that commercial space, really, right now, that is the pawn shop that you guys had, may have been into, none of that that remains is really historic. They removed most of the support walls that ran from the front all the way to the back, and they replaced them with these steel beams. And it, it was not meant to be that way either. The way that we're looking at this, this is a building that has lost a lot of its internal historical character in the downstairs. Upstairs, you know, it still has the hardwood floors. Most of the construction in the rear of the building is, like, early sixties, late fifties. It's a different era for the intern, uh, the, uh, inside as well regarding the, the ruins that exist. Um, so the way that we're looking at this is, this is a really important building, the downtown Pulaski, and yes, and was this building ever meant for that? No, but it was not ever meant to be in the condition that it is right now. And we believe that the best use of this would be to be this vibrant downtown area to attract people that live in the town to it, that want to live in the town to it, and people not from here to come to it. We have the most beautiful courthouse in the state in our downtown. And this building is just lucky enough to be right across the street from it. With a beautiful glass facade to eat anywhere or sit anywhere in the building and look outside and see that courthouse. And, and then the, it, I hate that the building fell, but man, that. it, I hate that the building fell, but man, that pocket park looks nice. It looks really nice. And that's a really, with that being located where it is, it kind of brings some of that synergy with what we're trying to do with that building as well. A pa- a place outside for people that may live in these apartments to relax and rest and eat. Or a person that comes to that commercial space, to come to that commercial space and maybe just wait until it's their turn to eat. Maybe, we hope there's a problem for, and there are people who get turned away and get a buzzer. You're gonna have to sit outside for their turn to be seated at a restaurant there or something. So I don't think that was, what that building was intended to be, but it sure ain't what it, it wasn't intended to be what it is right now. And what we're looking at, I believe, is the best use for it.
Curiosity, picture you got up there.
Yes, sir.
Uh, apartment wise, is that a seable? Can you actually go out on that, like you seen the kind of upper cities? You go out on the roof and said, is that kind of what they, can you, is that?
So, so we're, it, so we're in the process, we submitted our part one for the historical tax credits. Um, we're, so we got approval for that. Our, our part two is the description of what we plan to do with the building and what D H R will actually allow us to do. So we are in talks about a rooftop, you know, whether it's for the apartments or it's for the commercial space. Or, or both, yeah, as Luke said. So we're, we're in the process of finding out exactly what we can do, can and can't do. But that, that is something that we have really been thinking about doing, that would fit perfectly.
And right there, that's uh, that's actually the upper, upper roof, so that is actually.
Yeah, tha- that's the freight elevator uh door, like it gets into the, the uh, the mechanical room, yeah.
And I just, I snapped that picture while we were up there doing the measurements for part two and that to see the his- history of this, the elevator and and the Dalton Building and Draper Mountain, it was just, I wanted to leave with that image. But down below that, takes a, there's a flight of stairs, like a fire stairs, I guess, that come down in that lower rear side. Now that is what we're talking about having a potential rooftop area.
Mr. Allison, with that being said, I mean, I know we have asked you some questions already, but if you, if you'd like to go through any other comments that you guys had for us?
Yes, sir, I would like to just, real quick, what we're gonna roll through right now uh on this presentation is what you guys are being handed right now as well. So as my partner Austin sta- stated, we have submitted part one for our historical tax credits and been approved by Virginia Department of Historic Resources. That being said, we are now moving forward with part two for the historical tax credit process. And these drawings that you're looking at right now are, these are not finalized. These are, they're not even really what'll be submitted. These are just the most up-to-date schematic designs that we have right now. And we wanted to show you how far we are right now in the process, so we wanted you to see the most updated uh floor plans. That being said, uh, you guys know the building that we are talking about, thirty-seven West Main. I want to show you the rear of the building real quick and uh the three windows on that lower roof with that would be opened back up. There's a door that you can't see um dead center of that building, but uh if you could, there are actually, I would love for you guys to come out and look at this building 'cause there's some fascinating things about this building that the connection between it and the building that we are in right now, how it was that building and then the steps that they took to make this the build, the usable space that it is right now. They've removed several of the windows on the second floor and we intend to open up all of those and replace them with two over two windows like historically intended. So on your packet, this is the lower floor, the most updated floor plan from Fraser Associates uh out of Stanton, Virginia. They're helping us as historical consultants for our historical tax credits. This is the most amount of apartments that we would be requesting to put down, which would be three apartments in the downstairs rear. These would be the apartments that would be accessible for people with mobility issues, um bad knees, bad hips, or, or, or the elderly, where traveling up twenty-five stairs may be too dangerous for them and maybe they want to live in the downtown area. Um, they all would have access on the rear. And then on the front, we're just preparing to look at all the different options uh with different, we have different people that we're reaching out to right now that are potential customers or tenants to use this space in the front as commercial space. So this right here, there's like a, a mezzanine halfway up to the second floor in the rear. And as you can see, there's a restroom there and another flight of steps to the side. That would be the potential entrance, uh potentially the entrance for the second floor rooftop patio space. And this is the most updated uh drawings for the space. Again, like I said, this is not finalized whatsoever. Uh, but we would have four apartments in the rear, three up front. The three apartments up front are all constructed with the existing historic walls that are there. And again, everything in the top behind those, all the way to the rear, none of that is period, is uh historic, so all of those through D H R would be able to be removed and then put in uh walls that would be best for uh apartments. So um, this is what we're going after, right? This is from nineteen fifty's, this is a celebration of Christmas. There's a, there's a guy, Santa Claus, see, some of y'all might have heard of him. Right there, he's riding his uh, his sleigh going down the middle of West Main Street with packed streets. And that building is the one right there, you can see the corners running all the way down. That's thirty-seven West Main. Right at the heart of downtown Pulaski and that's why we're doing this is because that glory that Pulaski once was with all of the people flocking. My nanny said that she came from Tazewell when they went shopping. In Thompson Valley and Tazewell, they pile up in the car and they would drive to Pulaski if they were gonna buy anything. Not Roanoke, not Bristol. So I see Pulaski as this, this opportunity. It has the bones, it has the history and we're just investing in the infrastructure. Uh, nineteen fifty, I believe.
Uh, 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 I believe either.
Really? Hey, heck, now y'all, I'll dive into the photo, I'll look, that would be awesome. That's beautiful, I mean, and on the talk, there's a Pulaski Facebook page and they're always posting these incredible photos of Pulaski. You can't fall in love with the town anymore when you see this history of the town, I mean. You learn about, about the the Rock and Roll Hall of Fame, the Flamingos that went to the Kalfi School and you learn about this town is just it's a, it's a beautiful place, you know?
When the, this is on the sidewalk in the, around nineteen fifty, two, three. When it was, when cars.
Mm-hmm.
I was a sucker boy, that's why I knew one of the, the, the.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I worked there for fifty cents an hour.
Really?
Being a wage.
Fifty cents an hour, goodness gracious.
Mr. Allison, thank you for your presentation, that, and council members have any other questions for? Aggreg Capital.
Just a, just a, I guess as a question, did they have to then submit a building plan and site plan and all that stuff to actually do the construction?
They even have to go through bill permit for electrical plumbing, H V A C, um, a complete site plan review process.
And would they, if they wanted to change, like add, have less apartments or more apartments, would they have to come back or does this just allow us to do that? I'm just, just curious.
So right now, as the zoning ordinance is written, there is no limitation on the number of ground floor apartments.
Okay.
Um, that's something that, you know, I would, of course, uh, council has set a, a request to planning commission to maybe work through some of those details. That may be something you guys want to consider right now, if you guys want to put a number on this special exception because you can subject this special exception to certain conditions based on the zoning ordinance. That may be a condition that you want to put on now as to limiting to the three. Um, of course, staff-wise, uh, we could, you know, do a staff disapproval, but it would definitely give it, give us more teeth if there's something written from the council, since there's not anything in the zoning ordinance.
And does the request that's written, is, is, is it only?
It requests only three, so technically if you approve the request, you're only approving three as written.
And then is it only for the rear of the building?
It's al- it's, it is written, as the request is written, it's only for the rear.
All right, thanks, I just wanted to make sure that.
Maybe that's just something you include in the motion as you, as you often do, as written. And that would suffice.
All right, you know, it's in here, first, three first floor.
And then seven on the second.
And seven on the second, okay.
And those are maximums, so.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, they could come back later and after they get their drawings done, they might decide that it would be two to one and, you know, and four on the top or, you know, some combination, but those would be the maximum numbers.
Okay.
I do, and I do think, uh, and I know Ms. Bertram addressed this, I, I do think it is very important that we do make sure that we do our diligence in, in understanding what the future of and this, I know this is just a particular special ex- exception request, but because of this particular space, yeah, I, I believe in, in my mind, the, the, what we call the creek walk is more of a sidewalk at this point, you know? And, and should be regulated the same way, you know, as a, as a sidewalk space would be regulated. And from a safety standpoint, as Mr. Allison spoke towards their interest in bringing folks that may have mobility issues into that area, it's a thirty or forty yard walk at least to get to a parking space.
Yes.
To the back of that building. And, and that, that space and that walk, you know, needs to be hindered, no less than the walk on a sidewalk would be hindered. And, and I don't know that currently it's regulated that way. And if, if that's our interest of future of that area, and I know this is a specific interest, I, I think that's a direction that we need to look at, what, what would it take to, to accommodate the, you know, future use?
Yeah, and you essentially have a walkway um in that alley uh that is closer to the creek. And you may recall that there were some plannings that were uh put in immediately adjacent to uh the wall. And then there is a um solid white line that is where a lot of people walk currently. But that's separated by the rest of the alley and the portion that's closest to this building where those three apartment doors would come out. So it's obviously something uh that we will be looking at and we've already started some conversations. Uh, of course, the biggest challenge is gonna be how to redirect garbage collection if that becomes necessary. And um I know people don't like front yard, uh, front door collections uh either. Um, I've had to deal with that in some other places, so I know from experience how that can be challenging. But as this project develops, we are also having conversations internally from various staff people to say, okay, what do we do in the future? And I have asked the um key staff people in Public Works and Police to look at um the planning commission comments that were made as it relates to some of that future planning as well. And I do think in the comprehensive plan, it's our hope that your planning commission will begin addressing some of these issues long-term that we need to be looking at as we uh advance the town.
And I suppose, as everybody said, there are good problems to have.
And regarding uh the trash, I, I don't know if you guys have ever seen the, the workers at Owls take their trash out, but they'll take it all the way through their parking lot, across uh Jefferson Street, over into the parking lot where the firehouse is, and that's where they take the trash. And where the, there's a trash dumpster right now, um, going up West Main Street, not going with the flow of traffic for uh some of the units, I guess, what is the address? It's one, first West Main Street? But there's a location of one at the back of that alleyway, um.
Beside our?
Yeah, so, so you have the, the alleyway and the building right after the alleyway, it's the one on, the building on the corner there. There's a dumpster there. And I mean, that's, it's definitely not as far as the big people from Owls travel and they take the garbage out, so. I mean, it's a shorter walk in that regard.
Any other comments or questions? With that being said, I'd like to open the public hearing for case number twenty twenty-one dash oh three S E special exception request for Aggreg Capital LLC.
We do have a question from a gentleman online. Um, he may have spoke to this already, but he does ask about flooding. Um, in the year, just about any kind of precautionary measure.
Yes, sir. So when it comes to flooding, I, I reached out to Kathy Hanks, president of Friends of Pete Creek. And uh for the past five years, the Virginia Silver Jackets and U- U S Army Corps of Engineers have been working on an unstruc- non-structural flood mitigation report. In that record, reported, um, it did studies on building sixty-nine, one owned by the town, and eighty-seven and eighty-nine, which are our first project that we did in downtown. These are two very similar location, similar in location buildings to thirty-seven in regards to the creek. And it has an entire assessment of the flood risk for those buildings and recommendations of what to do to mitigate the risk of the flood and the damage that it could do to those buildings in the front and the rear. And as we move forward with this, you know, renovation, we're not doing the minimum here. We're going from front to rear, all the way through the floor, all the way to the roof. Everything that's historic, we're keeping, everything that ain't. You know, we're gonna make sure that it is as efficient and as structural as possible. And the flood non-structural report, we're gonna be following that and providing that to our, our contractors as we move forward with this construction.
And I, I mean, I'll, I'll just go into that, um, for all of the funding and different grants that we do get, uh, I mean, I'm sure Darlene, you know, the, the flood insurance, I mean, we, we, there's very extensive flood insurance that we, we, uh, we have, so.
And the council actually received uh that presentation a couple meetings ago, uh, that had that report in it. So those areas that in the future they see as opportunities for mitigation are being looked at, not just by individual property owners to flood the town in general.
And flooding is just a risk of being in downtown, I think, unfortunately. So it's just sort of a, I mean, un- unfortunately, that's just a, a reality of being in downtown is that, you know, you live, anytime you live next, I mean, this you see any of those pictures out of southeast Kentucky, you know, we, if it rains enough, well, it's gotta go somewhere.
Nashville and Nashville in two thousand nine.
Exactly, and so, you know, there's just a, we can, we should be cognizant of it and I think, you know, if we do have people living there, we should make sure that there is access to emergency services and connections so that they can be notified and we will be hopefully having a more integrated response to that when we install those um weather stations and flood monitoring stations that we got funding for, so. That, that definitely should be something that we should be um cognizant of, um, just like, and all the other things.
And you all brought that up in our first meeting when we were talking about zoning and everything and that, that's actually, I went straight to her, gave her a phone call and that's, that's how I stumbled upon that report, so.
Any other? Other comment? Thank you. But no more comment to be heard, close the public hearing. Public hearing closed. Ask if, yeah, for any other comments or consideration of an ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three, an ordinance permitting apartments as a special exemption at thirty-seven West Main Street.
Uh, the, consistent with our discussions earlier, that, that the specific limitations as laid out in the uh ordinance twenty twenty-one dash oh three with the maximum of seven second floor apartments and three first floor apartments facing the creek on the south side, as written, uh, moved to be done.
Say.
Mr. Clerk, if you would give a real comment?
Yes, sir. Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
Mr. Radcliffe?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, we really appreciate it. Y'all, uh, one more thing, about a year and a half, two years, looking forward to an awesome ribbon cutting, 'cause it's gonna be a heck of a party there, and I hope you all are invited.
All right, so now we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, move on to presentation, uh, temporary rate structure. Let me say, I'd like to welcome up Mr. Ryan Hendricks.
Good evening.
He's either watching back when he.
Well, he's just here for emotional support.
Oh, okay, because you're walking with him.
Thank you.
With him, I just didn't know he, he brought you along to be your, your security or what.
Good evening, how are you guys?
Good.
I appreciate you guys having us here today. Talked about our, uh, two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two, uh, proposed budget for the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Board, um, so with that, we'll kind of get started with a little bit of a background, because I'm not real sure that everybody maybe even knows where we are or what we, what we are, who we are, so, um, where is Pepper's Ferry, so, um, if you're looking at this map, the blue line there is our planning area, okay, so the star up in the northwest corner of Pulaski County is where the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Treatment Plant is located, we also have a couple of pump stations, um, but you can see the, the entire service area, the entire planning area is what that is, and then it's kind of hard to make out there, um, but you can see each of the dashed areas is also each of the member jurisdictions' planning area is within the entire planning area. So, a couple of key facts, um, just what Pepper's Ferry is, so we're a regional wholesale treatment authority, okay, so we provide treatment and pumping services for six member jurisdictions, um, those members are the Town of Pulaski, Pulaski County PSA, Town of Dublin, Thoroughly Sewage Authority, um, Montgomery County PSA and the City of Rappahoe, okay, each of those six members owns and operates their own collection systems, that includes their pump stations, um, and then they send tri- flow through the regional system to our treatment facility. Uh, we have twenty-two full-time employees, dedicated wastewater professionals, that do it day in and day out, um, and then, so our treatment capacity, looking at just the treatment plant, is a nine million gallon per day wastewater treatment facility, what that, and that's on an average flow, and then you have a peak capacity of eighteen million gallons per day, so that's what the flow, you know, if you have a, a short peak for duration around six hours, that's what we're supposed to be able to handle. Currently, what we're seeing is the two thousand twenty calendar year average, we're averaging about five point five four million gallons per day, and so you'll see that a lot, we dealing million gallons per day, um, and right now, our five-year average is around five point one two million gallons per day, and so that'll, that'll come important, uh, further in this presentation. Um, so, we first received flow in nineteen eighty-seven, and the reason the, the Pepper's Ferry Regional Wastewater Authority is in existence is the Clean Water Act in nineteen seventy-two came into effect, started regulating the point source discharges of wastewater treatment facilities, industries, what have you. Um, at that time, uh, I believe it was four or five of the members, um, not including the town at that point, had either primary treatment facilities or treatment lagoons, and so they got one of the very last loans from EPA to create a regional facility, right, and so I think that's the way it started, from, from remembering correctly, about two years later, somewhere around time, the town also came into that and became a member, and so that's where we became the, the full regional, uh, system that we are now, so we own two pump stations, the Radford Pump Station, which serves only the members of Montgomery County and the city of Radford, we also own the New River Pump Station, um, that serves all member jurisdictions, and it's, it receives ninety-eight percent of the wastewater flow that we treat, goes through the New River Pump Station, that facility also has an equalization facility, we can store up to four million gallons of, of flow for wet weather, um, it also has what we call our headworks, and that's where we're removing things like scr- uh, you know, large objects, screenings, grit, things like that, um, and so then you have the wastewater treatment facility, so the wastewater treatment facility is located up near the Veterans, uh, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial Bridge near Radford Army Arsenal, um, we're across the river from the Arsenal, we have around seventy-one acres up there, twenty-four within the fence, and so that's the picture you're seeing there, it's a, it's a very, one of the most picturesque, uh, places you'll find in a wastewater treatment facility, um, but we have primary clarification, aeration basins, secondary clarifications, UV disinfection, anaerobic digestion, and class B biosol, so that's some of the treatment technologies we have. So, um, now that we kind of have an overview, looking at the twenty-one, twenty-two budget, right, this budget is very similar to other, other budgets in that our mission is always the same, and it's to provide excellent service for our member jurisdictions while trying to keep our rates flat, okay, um, that's always a goal, this, this budget continues to, to meet those goals, um, and, and so, insomuch that we have a, most of our cost rec- cost center rates are flat, we have one exception, which was a two point four percent increase in the New River Pump Station, um, which is very small, and then, um, the, we have debt service and capital improvements, and we try to keep those flat when you look at them in, in, in a combination, and there'll be a slide on that, and then we're also using some internal rev- uh, reserves this year to fund some critical capital investments, but we're doing that using our reserves and not passing that cost along to our members in, in direct charges, and then, as always, we're wanting to make sure we're staying in compliance with our, our financial policies. So, just so you kind of understand what, how our budget's structured, we're an enterprise fund, um, and where that fund is, our user rates, fees, and direct charges, okay, they are cer- they're supporting the services in really three core areas, the treatment cost, debt service cost, and capital improvements cost. Debt service and capital improvement, um, you know, pretty straightforward, treatment cost is, that's all treatment, that's pumping from New River, that's pumping from Radford, that's, um, pro- all the different treatments and all the other, um, subcategories, programs, pre-treatment, biosol, it's all that is combined into one treatment cost. And then, so in those treatment costs, we really have three primary cost centers, and that's the wastewater plant, the New River Pump Station, and the Radford Pump Station, and so each one of those has its own rate. So to kind of understand that budget, this is a little bit hard to read, but, um, you need to kind of understand how we use the members' flows to fund those treatment costs, okay, so what you see here is the, um, five-year average flow for the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one budget year, and in the far left column is your, is the five-year flow for twenty-one, twenty-two, so when I say five-year flow, so for twenty-one, twenty-two, those are actual flows from two thousand sixteen to two thousand twenty, okay, so for the Town of Pulaski, what we're seeing is last year's fi- last fiscal year's five-year average flow was seven hundred and thirty million gallons, that's the five-year average of the flow that you guys sent us for those calendar years, for fifteen through nineteen, so for twenty-one, twenty-two, that five-year average bumped up to seven hundred and ninety-seven million gallons, so that's a nine point two five percent increase in the amount of flow that you have sent the authority for treatment. Overall, you can see that we're at a four-point imper- four point eight percent increase as a total authority, okay, and so on the very right-hand side, you can see, everybody except for Montgomery County had an increase in their five-year average flow, so everybody's flows have gone up, we'll get into that a little bit more in, 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 in the, in the next slide, um. So, looking at how, where those five-year flows are derived from, the graph that you're seeing here is our treated flow, annual treated flow versus rainfall, okay, the rainfall here is just recorded at the wastewater treatment facility, and then obviously our five-year flows are, are the combined flows from all our service areas. What's, so, one, you know, some people could ask, why, why are we, why am I showing you rainfall with treated flow, you know, in a perfect world, cemetery sewer would be a closed loop, right, I mean, only, only what you flush down in the system comes to us, we all know our, our infrastructure's getting really old, um, that's not just a problem for newer valley, that's every state, every, almost every country, um, so what happens is, is when it rains, we, we receive that flow, uh, or a percentage of it, uh, depending on how much it's rained and how long it's ran- rained, we get more of it, um, so that's called I and I, inflow and, and, and inflow and infiltration, okay, the biggest problem with that type of flow is it doesn't have a lot of value to our biological system, it's very hard to treat, it costs increased electricity, it costs increased overtime, it costs increased manpower, so all that flow, even though it seems like it would just be rainwater, it's hard to treat, it's, it lowers the temperature of the wastewater, so, again, it's just flow that we're having to treat. What is of note here, if you look at two thousand seventeen, we've had a steep incline in the amount of flow having to be treated from seventeen to through to two thousand twenty, that represents about a thirty-five percent increase in the treated flow for the authority, and it mirrors somehow from some high precipitation. Um, two thousand eighteen was pretty wet, uh, two thousand nineteen's a little bit of an anom- anomaly, or, uh, or it's a little, it's not, we're s- you know, I guess, uh, respective of what really happened, and the reason I say that is you had Hurricane Michael during that year, we had an extreme wet period for four or five months, and then it was dry for, for the months before that, so a lot of that rain was really in a short amount of period of time, so a lot of that flow came in kind of spurts that year. And then two thousand twenty, very wet year, um, for us on record at the wastewater plant, it was, I think, our second wettest on record since, uh, two thousand thirty, if I remember. Uh, so, that's, that's kind of why I show you this slide, so the next slide is keeping in the same theme, except for this is specific to the Town of Pulaski, and so we're looking at flows for Town of Pulaski, um, from two thousand three to two thousand twenty, so again, the blue line is the town's flow, um, that is actually sent to us on an annual, on a calendar year basis, and then the orange block are the rainfall, and these were captured from the NOAA, um, site, and I believe that's maybe it, uh, from the town's water plant, is where that's located, and so I got the, I got these rainfall amounts right off of the NOAA site, um, and so it's, again, you can see that same steep incline from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, or the flows that we're treating from the town. That increase, though, is a sixty-two or sixty-three percent increase in the flows from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty, so you can see, as we move forward to two thousand twenty and two thousand twenty-one budget, now you've got those three wet years that are, that are forming that five-year average, and that's raising that five-year average flow. Um, two thousand twenty, I believe, if I remember reading correctly, I mean, this was the, was the wettest year on record for the town, um, at seventy inches rain, that's, I mean, crazy amount of rain. So how does that affect this five-year average flow, okay, that blue, what you're looking at here is just so you can see how we try to normalize that flow. That blue shaded area behind you is that same, if I go back, you'll see that, that same line in treated flow, okay, so that's your annual, every year flow, and the red line now is the five-year average flow, so if we build on a yearly flow, it would be spiked up and down all over the place, so we use this five-year average flow to normalize it, to level it out, and make it a little bit more consistent for all our members and for the board. So how does all that translate into our revenue and our expenditures, so the table you're looking at here is the proposed, total proposed revenue for, um, twenty-one, twenty-two, for the Pepper's Ferry, for all, the top, the top portion of that table is all of our members, and that's only direct charges, so those are direct charges to each of the members, and so you can look and see the blue box there, it's a three point oh two percent increase in revenue. The important thing to remember there, that's revenue, not, that's not a rate increase, that is due to the amount of flow that we expect we're going to treat, so it's not a rate increase, it's actually due to treatment cost. So for the town specifically, it's a four point nine percent increase in the amount of flow that we expect to be coming from the town, and that's based off of that five-year average, so it's about a hundred and seven thousand dollars, um, in a, in an increase. You can see everybody except for, um, the county and the Town of Dublin has that, has a percentage increase, theirs are, are more associated with debt service rolling off, some of the debt service roll- rolling off that helped, that helped them kind of, um, go, and, and they didn't have as much of a, a big rate, uh, big, um, treatment cost increase, so, um, the bottom part of that, that yellow box with twenty-nine point seven one looks pretty, pretty like a huge increase, that's where we talk about using those internal res- uh, reserves to fund some critical capital projects, so there is a twenty-nine point seven percent increase in the overall budget, um, however, those aren't being passed along in a direct charge, so you can see from, we've got, from a reserve from our CIP account, one point two million dollars of that is used of our own reserves to fund a stated project, um, that will be replacing all the PLCs in our project, it's a critical, it's a critical part of our project, um, and matter of fact, I think that the two of the town's pump stations, four A and four B, are supposed to be kind of included in that, in that project. Um, so again, same thing for, and I apologize, I noticed that this was a typo, this, this should say twenty-one, twenty-two expenditures, you'll see expenditures equal revenue, so it's again a twenty-nine point seven one percent increase overall, um, but if you look at the treatment plant, when you, when you look through Treatment Plant, New River, Radford, um, you'll see that those increases are again associated with an increased treatment flow, not an increased rate. Um, so specifically looking at the rates, um, and this slide just kind of, kind of dials in on the ma- the most, I guess costly rate I'll say, um, uh, but is the wastewater treatment rate itself and the treatment cost, and so if you look since two thousand thirteen, we've been able to keep our rates fairly flat, um, it's about a la- ten, ten percent increase from two thousand and eleven, or two thousand and twelve, I think, to two thousand twenty-one. Um, and then, but if you look at nineteen, twenty, and twenty-one, you see the rates there at sixteen, seventy, kept the same rate in twenty twenty, kept the same rate in twenty twenty-one, so it's less than a half a percent increase in the actual rate for the treatment rate, but you can see that red line, the treatment costs are contin- continuing to climb, so we're able to keep that rate flat even though the costs are continuing to climb. This slide is specifically about debt service and capital improvement, um, two thousand twenty, uh, the reason that big spike is they, we ended up paying off a, a huge bond for the UV upgrade, and they paid it off in one year instead of, instead of delaying it, um, but if you look from two thousand thirteen on, what you'll see is you've got the green bars, the br- the green columns are combined debt and CIP, and you'll see they're right there around two million dollars on the right, very far right-hand scale, and then the individual lines, they're, they're running a million dollars apiece for debt service and CIP, and that's what we've tried to target since two thousand thirteen, um, to keep that as even as we can, in two thousand, around two thousand eighteen, two thousand nineteen, well, I guess it started in two thousand seventeen, we realized that a million dollars a year was not going to keep up with the, some of the major infrastructure upgrades we needed, we ended up going out for another bond, and in two thousand eighteen, we got that bond and started a project which just completed, it was about a ten and a half million dollar upgrade, and to allow us to do that, what we took, told all our members and our board members is that we would keep our capital improvements cost down to match that, to match that debt service cost, and still, so you see, you see in twenty twenty-one, those two bars separate, we've got a much higher debt service cost, but a much lower capital improvement cost to keep that flat. Um, that'll, that'll happen like that until, I think, twenty twenty-four, when the two thousand two B series rolls off, at which time we can look at increasing our capital cost back to where it used to be. So what does that mean for, you know, all of our members, these are the proposed rates, supporting rates, that are going to support the treatment costs that, that we proposed for FY twenty-one, twenty-two. As you'll see, the current rate, um, for twenty twenty-one, sixteen eighty, treatment plant staying at sixteen eighty per million gallons. Um, New River Pump Station went from two ten to two fifteen, that equates to about ten thousand dollars in our overall budget, so that's a very small budget, um, cost center. Radford Pump Station stayed flat, New River, Old Main stayed flat. So, this last slide, um, this is something, so I'm not sure if you guys are aware or have ever seen the Draper Aiden, um, rape study, they put on a very good rape study in, in. They put on a very good rate study in, in nationwide, but they have a really good website through Chapel Hill. And, you know, they can, they look at rates all throughout Virginia. And so you can look at just sewer versus just water. And so from the Drake Raiden study, so what you're looking at is you'll see our projected flows, that's our five-year average, there's our total revenue, and direct charges, not, not the use of internal reserves. Cost per million gallon and our cost per five thousand gallons. And so all the services that we provide, we do that for fifteen dollars and fifty-eight cents per five thousand gallons, or less than a third of a cent, okay? We take a lot of pride in that, that's, we, we, we give a lot, we do a lot. We haven't had a violation, an F violation in over ten years. And so we do all that, and we'd like to make sure that our members know that we do that, do that for that cost. The Virginia average wastewater rate is forty-eight fifty for sewer only. So we're about thirty-two percent of the average, which means that the rest of that, that rate can go towards their own collection systems and their own pump stations. I believe, I don't, if I understand Kielaski's rate, we're probably about twenty-one to twenty-two percent of Kielaski's sewer rate only, if I, if I'm doing the calculation correct. So, and like I say, I, I, I just got that off of your rates, but I may be applying something incorrectly. The important thing to, to note here is to kind of go back to, I, I want the council to understand this. So if you look at the very bottom, bold summary, so our rates are based off of what we expect a five-year average of one point seven billion gallons of flow coming to the authority. And so we're doing that for a third of a gallon and fifteen fifty-eight for five thousand gallons. The last two years, two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty, we've received over one point nine billion gallons actually at the plant. So while our budget is based off of that, if we end up getting one point nine two million gallons, we've got to treat it and we bill out based off of that. So that's where you probably, you know, and, and you're not the only member, but that's where members are seeing that they're seeing some increased, you know, increased, their, their budgets are maybe a little tighter, they're having to use some reserves because of that very fact. We had an extremely wet year last year, let's hope, I mean, we're having a continually wet year this year. Let's hope we all get some dry weather, my yard is a mess. And so that's the end of the presentation that I have. I'd be glad to take any questions I've got. I gave Ms. Murcham copies of the slides for you guys for after. My contact information is on there. We would love to have you at the plant if you ever want to tour. We're very proud of, of the, of the facility that we have, and the more information we can offer the better.
Thank you, I actually have a couple of questions to start, I'm guessing there's probably some other questions as well, but just right off. So as far as the flow itself for the town of Kielaski, where is that measured, or how?
That is measured through your Four Shmain, the four A Four Shmain, the four A pump station. And there is a, there is a meter in your pump station that, all, all, because the town is nice in that all the town's flow comes through one defined point and gets pumped to the four B pump station. And then so everything from the town comes from one defined point, there's one meter, and that's where that meter is with.
So that, and then that, that flow off that meter is what we get charged based off of what it says?
Yeah, and that, and that meter's calibrated every, every two years. And, and we keep a close eye on it, anytime we see any abnormality, you know, work with Bill.
If I think of the, this, I guess for capital size, you know, of the town of Kielaski in comparison to the other members, there is a pretty obvious difference in our flow compared to the other members' flow. It doesn't necessarily mesh up with, you know, population, you know, so much, you know, percentage-wise, there's an obvious difference. Is there any direct, I mean, basic understanding that we would have in, in regards to what causes to be significantly different?
Well, so, yeah, and, and so it would be not just per capita, but industry. And so, you know, you've got some, some heavy water usage industries also, that would also, you know, factor into that. If I'm not mistaken, James Hardy is around five hundred thousand gallons a day, is their, is their sewer usage?
So if the majority of our pump is that, is from James Hardy?
If I'm not, yeah, I don't know the numbers.
That's, so that's close to ten percent of the average flow, that would be, if you have five million gallons a day?
Something like that, yeah.
So that's, that's probably the biggest, probably biggest customer, individual customer I'm talking about?
Probably, so yeah, individual sewer user, yeah, individual water user, I know. Yeah, a third of, a third of the town's flow, yeah, absolutely.
And then I had this one, and this is separate, I guess, from the actual rates and the charges, but after you guys treat the water, all the things, what, what happens with everything that you guys treat?
So all our treated flow is discharged to the New River. And so i- if you look at that picture, there, it's actually on around, it's like a thousand foot of discharge, discharge pipe. So it actually goes down and around the bend near the, near the trestle, and actually discharges over on Radford Army Arsenal's property, technically.
Then you may want to mention where you take the sludge.
And so, yeah, and so, so there's, so wastewater treatment has two, two products. You've got clean water, and you've got a sludge product, or if you're treating it, a biosolids. We used to land apply our biosolids, which is a very, you know, solid after product. It's very pricey, unfortunately, not a lot of people, you know, it's becoming a little more politically challenged. It's a little bit easier down here, but it's a very hard thing to keep up with. And we were paying about twice what we, what we can get rid of at the landfill. So our, our sludge, actually, we still make a class B product, which could be land applied, but so we take it to the New River Resource Authority, and they use it for alternate daily cover. And so that's where our sludge, biosolids is, is, is special.
This is not, not a trip course. About five or six years ago, I gave, I guess it's called a rebate on the, did you see that?
Um, I don't know enough about that to be able to talk, you know, to know what that rebate would have included. I can say, you know, right now, I can't see, you know, with, with what's being planned and what's necessary for the facility to operate, I, I cannot, I would not be able to see, you know, just first glance looking at a rebate. Just because, I mean, these are actual costs that are, you know, it's not like we're, you know, building, you know, huge administration buildings for no reason. I mean, we've still got a very large facility, that majority of it is still thirty years old. Even though we've upgraded and spent ten and a half million dollars, that was really all of that upgrade. There was very little new technology, it was just replacing old equipment that was, you know, at the end of a useful life.
So I guess that's the follow-up question to that is, what are the, like, do you see in the next, you know, five to fifteen years as being the, I mean, is there going to need to be major capital projects? Or is it, do you feel like you can, through sort of regular, like, debt issuances and things like that, keep up with? You know, should we be planning for, you know, besides a block based on usage?
Right.
Uh, you know, like a capital contribution or something like that?
Yeah, I think right now, looking, you know, I mean, we try to do a five and a ten-year CIP. And I would think right now, looking definitely five years, it's, it can be supported through normal, the normal amount of debt and CIP. We don't see any new debt coming on right now. And we try to only use that for large building type infrastructure. For our normal process type, equipment type, that's how we, we want to be able to pay for that, you know, as we go. It's not something we want to be doing borrowing, you know, and our board has, has directed us in that manner. And so, yeah, I don't see any major, you know, another, you know, twenty million dollar borrowing or something like that, you know, in crystal ball. You know, some of that is driven by technology, some of that is driven by, you know, for some reason, if somebody has a huge, some dude, some huge new industry coming in that, that they need additional load. So we're, we're, we're designed for the nine million. And so part of our facility is already rated at the next step, the twelve and a half. So, you know, that's what our members might need also. So if one of our members does land a huge, huge water users are fairly rare these days, because industries want to save money too. But there are cases where you get a huge organic load user that, you know, would drive an increase. And so that, you know, something like that. You know, but barring that, I would say it's fairly normal, you know, normal operation stuff.
Mr. Riceberry might, might just point out, obviously, I think the council knows that Lane has been a member of the board for a long time at Pepper's Ferry, but Jeff Morrell is also one of your representatives. And then on a monthly basis, your town engineer, Bill Petticoat, attends those meetings as well. And has a lot of interface with the actual staff at Pepper's Ferry. And we all have been seeing each other more frequently than normal as it relates to the sulfate study and the implications of that from both a financial standpoint as well as a treatment standpoint. And at a subsequent meeting, Bill will be coming and talking specifically about that study. But we did want you all to have the background about the Pepper's Ferry operation, its relationship to the town, and the rate structure, that will be an issue that we will be addressing in the budget. And I think I told the council at your last meeting that the amount allocated for payment to Pepper's Ferry this year is currently insufficient to meet our obligations through the balance of the fiscal year. So we're going to have to make some budgetary adjustments on that. That's one of several items that is being negatively impacted, not just by, excuse me, weather, but by some underestimating at the onset of the budget. So pray for no more rain, is the message. Not only for Ryan Jarrett, but for the bills that are coming.
Absolutely.
If I might ask just one question, Ryan, you mentioned that you all were going into your reserve fund, but I think it was one point seven million dollars?
One point two, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, what is the size of the reserve for Pepper's Ferry?
Oh, man, that's a good question. I, I don't, I, I don't have the numbers right now, yeah. We, we have our, we, our financial policies require us to keep, you know, at least, at least a year's budget, you know, at least a year's worth of budget in, in one budget. And then we have to make sure that we're spending, you know, that our debt service to operations, but debt service to operation. And so, you know, we're, we're meeting that, but I, I don't have the number back now.
Would you mind just shooting me an email with that? I'd be interested because for municipal operations, we have certain percentages that we look to meet, both for coverage on water and sewer enterprise funds, and yours is an enterprise fund, and then for our, our general fund. And so I'd just be curious, particularly when you say you have a year's worth, most auditors for those other kinds of funds would have it, perhaps at most six months, as opposed to a year, but I'd just be curious as to the amount.
Right, yeah, yeah, I can get, I can get a clerk and, and get things. And, and what, and, you know, and our financial policies dictate that what, anytime we have excess revenue, it can only be used for, for two, one of really two things, and that's either reserves or for capital improvements. And so that's all we, that's all we can do.
I guess you'll find one more question is, you, you mentioned that we, you know, we have I and I problems because of the edge of the system. Is there, I mean, one, is that, would that meaningfully affect our flow to you if we did? I mean, you know, within, not within, not, assuming we can't rip up all the old stuff in town. But, you know, I mean, how much should, you know, do you all have a, like, a recommendation of how much we should be spending on that to sort of minimize that little piece in cost, especially if rainfall is going to keep going up?
Right, so there's, there's a couple of things about that. And so, and, and obviously, you're not the only member that's, 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 this is affected by it. So we've actually talked about, and we actually even talked to DEQ with our, with this last bond issuance, and whether there was something we could do, maybe a regional INI study. Because we're a wholesale, it's a little bit interesting because we hold a permit, and so we don't own the collection system. And so it gets a little muddy as far, like, if, if this was one big regional authority and we owned all the collection system, and every overflow got turned right back into our permit, DEQ would be hounding down our necks to be like, you've got to fix this, you've got to invest money. And so it gets a little bit muddy as far as that, because we hold the permit, but we don't own the collection system. So that being said, though, you know, we've talked to, we've talked to our board members about potentially, is there a way for us to look at a regional INI study? Because the regionalization of it is where you can get the most bang for the buck. And whether that's something that can be covered under potential bonds or a borrowing. They were going to look into that, we haven't heard anything from that, so I'll mention that first. Secondly, like I say, I've been doing this twenty-five plus years, most private municipal side, worked for the town of Christiansburg before I came here. What most engineers will tell you, we did a huge INI study in Christiansburg. What most engineers will tell you, and I'm not a consultant, so, but they will tell you that a good INI study will get you anywhere from twenty-five percent to fifty percent reduction, you know, that's it. Fifty would be shooting for the moon, right? So, and that's just because it's, it's so costly, right? Because you've got a camera everywhere, and you've got a TV everywhere. But that being said, that's, that's for the, really the more full, in-depth infiltration. There is some, there is some, on the, on the front end, what we call the input. And that's where we'll see spikes, you know, it'll, it'll rain an inch and our flow will double, right? Those are direct, that's direct creeks coming into the sewer. You know, stormwater outlets that are draining, that there's some direct connection. And those are a little easier, and so, you know, in my experience, you know, I can't talk for the town, but in my experience, those are usually worth trying to find. Because you can do it with a little bit of, a fairly small investment. But, yeah, so, I mean, i- is it gonna, is it gonna be, is it gonna fix all that INI? Absolutely not. The other problem is-
You want to get the biggest ones, but usually you're doing the most damage.
That's right, and, and the, and the bigger, and the, and some of the biggest issues, a lot of times, it's cheaper for us to treat. I mean, by the time you, we were looking at it for the, from the town of Christiansburg, and it was cheaper to treat it at the wastewater plant than to spend seven million dollars out in the, in the system trying to fix it there. At some point, it will have to be fixed because you'll have a major failure, right? But there's things like in, you know, in collection system, queues and things like that, it's still going to capture it, it's still going to treat it. It's a good question, you know, it's, it's a hard one to balance. But there's definitely, there's definitely some, some value in trying to get those, you know, those low hanging fruits.
Thank you.
You know, absolutely, good question.
And I would just add that there are some funds available at the state level through the Department of Environmental Quality that are specifically available to dress, to address INI.
Absolutely.
And depending on your need, it can be a combination of zero percent interest loans, and then some what they call principal forgiveness, which is essentially a grant, again, depending on the extent of the INI and, you know, what you are planning in terms of addressing it and the priority areas that you're going to be addressing. And they do look at what would be the potential reduction in INI if you were to go forward with a particular project.
Yeah, that's what-
Those will be things that we'll be talking to the council about as we have our discussion of the capital improvement budget, particularly as it relates to our utilities, water, and wastewater. But the DEQ money is available for the wastewater side of that.
And that's what, maybe where that region, if we, if we can get some movement on that regional INI study, maybe that's something that, that we could, we could look at, so.
Well, gentlemen, thank you for coming.
No, thank you, thanks for coming, like I say, anytime, just let us know, we'll be glad to come and present. Like I say, if, you know, you'd like to see the facility and, and see exactly what the services are we providing, there's, there's a lot of value in it, so just let us know.
Those town borrowers will stay close. Those town borrowers will stay close.
Well, and, and like I say, it is, it, it's, it's, you know, it's a service, um, not unlike the, the electric, the elec, the electricity that flows through us. Um, but the, uh, the thing, the thing to realize is, is that, that, that it was a wise decision back in eighty-seven to make a regional facility. If each one of us had our own wastewater plant, it would be a lot more expensive. Um, regionalization is a much, you couldn't do it for the rates that we're doing it now for each one of these individual wastewater plants. I just, you know, wholeheartedly believe that, so, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks for that.
Thanks, darling.
Thank you, Ryan.
I'll leave this right.
All right, so now we'll move on to item fourteen on our agenda, which is appointing the building official. Resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-five.
And Ms. Vice Mayor, I did not realize that, uh, Mr. Hager was gonna be here tonight, but since he is here, let me, uh, formally introduce him, uh, to, uh, the council. He's been with us just under a month.
Still not.
Uh, and as I think the council knows from some previous issues related to the building official function in the town, uh, once you appoint someone, and that is a requirement in the state code, that the position officially be appointed by the council, uh, then the incumbent has twelve months, uh, to achieve the certification that's required at the state level, uh, or the position has to be vacated. Uh, Mr. Hager, uh, took our admonitions very, very seriously about studying and getting on to his testing. And I think he wanted to be here tonight, he didn't tell me this, but I think he wanted to be here tonight so that I would have the opportunity to tell you that there are three tests, and he has already passed the first one. And is studying to pass the second one very, very soon. And then the tough one, uh, he'll wait a few months before he'll actually tackle. Uh, but he, uh, has been doing building inspections, uh, under the guidance of Bill Pettigo, um, as well as visiting, uh, sites with the county building official to get, uh, as much experience as he can as quickly as possible. And I don't know if you wanna say anything, Tom, before they take the official action?
Uh, the, the last five weeks has been very enjoyable, it's been very learning, uh, uh, very beneficial. Uh, hooking up with the, with the new county building official has been, uh, extremely successful because he, he's just become certified, so using him, uh, to help, uh, has been quite, has been, has been really well. Uh, I look forward to this position. Uh, I don't think I have any issues whatsoever getting certified in twelve months. This last, last exam will be the toughest of the three. The second one, I hope to succeed in the next couple of weeks. But the technical exam will probably be about six months down the road before I physically start tackling the attempts to get through that. Just understanding, uh, the biggest issue with these exams is navigating these, these codebooks and understanding how to find those in, in comparison to the way this exam has you take it. So, uh, I don't, I don't think it's gonna be an issue whatsoever. I feel quite confident that I'll succeed that certainly within a year. So I have no problems.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
Thank you, Colonel.
I do want you, if you're willing, to repeat something that you told me that I think the council would enjoy hearing. And that was your statement about the people that you are working with here compared to where you've worked before.
I'm fifty-two years old, and of course Darlene has seen my resume. I've been in a lot of places and done a lot of different things. Mr. Rigus, he knows me quite well. He knows kind of where I've been and gone from. Uh, I can honestly say that with the people that I've been working with here in the last six weeks, I have had more support between Darlene and, and Bill and the other staff members within the town. And you can combine all the other places I've worked together and I've had that support, so, it's been really amazing.
And I want you all to hear that, because I've said to you all on several occasions that you have a very dedicated staff that's very eager to be helpful. Um, and have taken a lot of direction from me and have experienced a lot of change in that process. But to hear, uh, Tom, who came in and just voluntarily said that to me a couple of weeks ago when we were having a meeting, I thought was very special, cause it says something about the workforce that you are blessed to have. So, thank you, Tom, for sharing that.
I think you're very fortunate to, uh, to, Ms. Bertram has, uh, she has surrounded herself with professionalism. So you are coming in to a great management, uh, staff to.
And it is very noticeable.
We're looking forward to, to having you.
I appreciate that very much. I look forward to being here for a long time, so.
Very good. Well, that being said, uh, I, I move to adopt resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-five, appointing Mr. Hager as building official.
Mr. Hager. Mr. Clark.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Penn.
Yes.
Mr. Dawson.
Aye.
Mr. Rackliff.
Aye.
Mr. Reese.
Aye.
Grant a little fish to Hager.
Looking forward to it.
All right, gentlemen, what's the next on the agenda? Uh, is item fifteen, appointing a member of cemetery trustee board, resolution twenty-two-one dash oh-six. If there's any comment or.
I'll, I'll also move to adopt twenty-two-one dash oh-six, appointing Mr. Bruce to the cemetery board trustees.
Say.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Rackliff?
Aye.
And Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Next we have our public comment period, and as far as I know, there's a.
Anything, Jordan, online?
Well, uh, not really anything, no.
All right, thank you.
With that being said, we will move on to our consent agenda for the approval of minutes from two sixteen twenty-one.
I don't think we need to vote, I think you can just, if we can move to, the consent, we can just, do we need a roll call for consent, or?
Motion.
Usually, a motion and say.
Okay, so move to adopt the minutes, unless somebody else has a comment, move to adopt the minutes that is written, um, uh, attached to the agenda.
Move.
Mr. Penn?
Yes.
Mr. Dawson?
Aye.
Mr. Rackliff?
Aye.
Mr. Reese?
Aye.
Thank you, and I will move on to council comments. Mr. Penn?
Uh, Mr. Reese, thank you.
Mr. Rackliff?
Uh, just quick, I'll leave it, uh, I want to back up to our, what we just talked about, uh, with Ms. Bertram surrounding us with professionalism. It really makes our job really, really, really easy. It's, uh, in my nine years I've been up here at, uh, we have, you, you've surrounded yourself and have worked to bring the staff to the best. I, I, I mean, I'm serious, uh.
You have a good staff.
People are starting to come around, you know, feeding off of you now. They're feeding off of you. They're, they're, I'm true, I'm, I'm telling, gonna tell this, cause I've had people that's a little leery, but they're feeding off your professionalism. And I'm, I'm getting calls that, Jordan, uh, you, you surround yourself, and I want to thank you for that. And, uh, you've made our job really easy. I can tell you that. You sure have, that's what I have. Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
Thanks. Councilman Reese?
Uh, good comment. The only comment I had, I felt like it was worth, uh, us publicly putting out a congratulation to, uh, Councilman Clance, Tyler Clance, who is not with us today for a very good reason. He, uh, just introduced a newborn into his family, and I felt like it would be nice to, I did get his permission before I did that publicly, to congratulate him and, and wish him and his family well as they, as they go through their next steps in life.
Even though they have ano- another child, this will be another experience having, so you're absolutely right.
Congratulations to him. That's all I have. So now we'll move on to the management support.
Uh, just a couple of things. Um, at your last meeting, we did pass out a, what we call the draft capital improvement budget. And, um, a member of the council mentioned that we did not have anything in that document at its first go-around to address playgrounds. And so we have, uh, in this edition, uh, added, uh, two playgrounds in the next, over the next five years. We've not designated where those would necessarily be located. I'll leave that to the council as we, uh, get to prioritizing, uh, the projects at the next meeting. Because of the length of tonight's meeting, I did not place this item on your agenda, but hope that at our next meeting on the sixteenth, we will have some time where you all can start, um, identifying specific items that you want as a priority to be considered, uh, in the budget. And I think I mentioned in a previous meeting that, uh, probably the way we will have to address, um, the majority of any projects that are identified as being needed in next year's budget will have to be through the issuance of debt, uh, since our cash situation is not, uh, the best. And I know a couple of you have specifically mentioned, uh, concern with our water and sewer, uh, items. And we do have, uh, in progress, uh, should have by, uh, your next meeting, some conclusions from an independent evaluation of our water and wastewater funds as well as, um, the current rate structure and our relationship with Pulaski County as it relates to water and sewer items as well. Um, we have a contract for water that dates back to nineteen ninety-four, uh, that I had evaluated as well as some other items. So I would just ask you all to take this version, uh, recycle, uh, the previous one and plan to bring that with you to the next meeting, um, for a serious discussion about where do we go from here. We've actually had a couple of, uh, organizations that work with the town ask for a copy of our capital improvement budget with the expectation that that's something that we would normally, you know, be in the process of updating. And I've advised them that we're initiating a five-year plan with this. And so we'll be delaying, making that available to the public until the councils have an opportunity to review it. We're also in the process of, uh, looking at updating, um, both the vacant building registration, legislation in your town code, as well as the rental inspection. And I hope to have that on your agenda for, uh, the next meeting. Uh, your current code does require a housing board of adjustments and appeals. That is an, I call it old version of, uh, a board that we also do not have, uh, which is a building, uh, appeals board. So we will be advertising, uh, for, um, membership to that board over the next several weeks. I don't expect to have it in place by the time, uh, that we meet again. But I just want you to not be surprised if you happen to see either an ad in the newspaper or on the town's Facebook page that we are recruiting for that particular, uh, board. That is one that, uh, we need to have in place as we go forward, particularly with the rental inspection program. And those were actually the only two items that I wanted you all this evening, recognizing that you would be putting in a full evening to it.
All right, well, that enough, move to the agenda. All right, with that said, will, I'm, uh, all of the favor of adjournance, say aye?
Aye.